All right, well, good evening, everybody. I'm Tony Scavie, the Town Manager. Michael Herbert is with me, the Assistant Town Manager. And this is another version or another opportunity for a pre-special Town Meeting forum where we run through the Town Meeting warrant to give folks a general idea of what they'll experience at Town Meeting, which I'll say right off the top is next Tuesday, November 17th, at 7:00 PM at the Ashland High School. The purpose of these forums, just to kind of set some ground rules, really is to run through the different articles that'll be presented, provide some background information, answer any, you know, basic questions that folks have. But I just want to be clear that this isn't a forum to debate the merits of any particular article. That's what Town Meeting Floor is for. And so, really, we want to give a general synopsis of each article, one by one. There's 12 articles. I'll say 11 substantive ones, if you take out the Town Report at the very beginning. And we'll run through and just give everybody an idea of what each article is about and any backup information. And then, folks can ask some generic questions or ask questions so that they can, you know, feel better informed when they arrive at Town Meeting to participate as they see fit in the discussion and certainly in the voting of the articles. So let's jump right into it. Hopefully, everybody has a copy of it that's in the audience. Thanks, folks, that'll be watching this later. That's why we're taping it. And so, we'll get to Article Two, which is to adjust the FY '16 appropriation. It's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. And the article basically is to see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the Treasury a sum of money to be added to or make adjustments to Article Three of the May 2015 Annual Town Meeting, which is the fiscal year 2016 budget, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. So I'd like to have Finance Director, Mr. Herbert, to speak to this particular article and give you an idea of what we'll be looking at.
Sure. Thank you, Tony. So, as we've gone through the fiscal year, we're in the month of November, we've started getting a more accurate picture of what our revenues are as they come in. And it turns out that we're doing a little bit better, or we're doing better than we thought we would be on our new growth numbers, which is, you know, things like building permits, new developments that come online. But unfortunately, we're not seeing the local receipt numbers that we anticipated when we set our budget. That being said, we're still at a net positive than what we were, you know, going into the fiscal year in July 1st. So that's point number one I want to make. Point number two is that when we did the budget, we set aside $170,000 into a salary reserve fund. And our plan was, at that time, we would be settling our collective bargaining agreements, adjusting non-union compensation. And when we came to the Fall Town Meeting, we would reduce that salary reserve line by the amount that we would need to increase it into different departments to help pay for those compensation adjustments. So, a large majority of the movement that you're seeing in this Article Number Two is related to that. Second is, we are establishing a Human Resources Department effective January, and that is contingent on the Board of Selectmen approving a reorganization plan. But we're putting this forth and putting the appropriation on the Town Meeting warrant as part of Article Number Two. We're also looking at increasing the school appropriation by $75,000. That's due mainly in part because our solar projects, while it's taken us a while to negotiate those power purchase agreements, and we're ending up with a much better 20-year deal than what we were anticipating when we went through the solar project in the spring, we are not able to start that project, and that project's not going to go online until the end of fiscal year '16. So, the schools were using or basically counting on the savings associated with that, and that's not going to come to fruition, so we're increasing the school appropriation by $75,000. And we're also going to boost the reserve fund, the FinCom Reserve Fund, by $50,000 to bring it up a little bit closer to where it was before, which was around $514,000. Now, to help pay for that, again, we're going to reduce the salary contingency line by $70,000. We're going to reduce our health insurance line by $154,000, and that's due to the fact that when we moved to the GIC effective July, when our employees migrated to those plans, they migrated to lower-cost plans than what we anticipated. And then, we're also reducing the Treasurer's Department budget by $30,000 simply because one position there is actually going to be moved into the Human Resources Department. So, that's reflected in that $90,000 appropriation right there. So, that's Article Number Two.
Hey, questions? Yeah, if you can come to the microphone, Joel, just for folks that are at home so they can hear the questions.
Hi. So, I have a couple of questions on this. When it refers to Article Three, was that the $170,000 Reserve Fund you were talking to? I mean, I don't remember what that article is.
No. Article Three was the budget. Article Three, yeah, Article Three of the May Annual Town Meeting was the budget. That was the budget article.
Okay.
Yes.
And can, is there a way to know, I mean, we're going to be voting on this adjustment. Is there, will we be given a specific dollar amount at that Town Meeting that we don't have here?
Yes. What you have, right, what you have there is the Town Meeting warrant that was posted. We're just finalizing the packet that'll be available at Town Meeting that has all the motions in it, which will have all the numbers in it. So, we're just finishing up, making sure that we've crossed all the i's and dotted the t's. So, yes, you'll see each department what the change in appropriation is from the approved Annual Town Meeting budget to the adjusted budget.
Okay. And Mike, you mentioned, if I got this right, I heard a $50,000 allocation to, or an appropriation to the FinCom.
The FinCom Reserve Fund.
To rebalance, to return them to the balance that we try to maintain in that fund? Is that?
Well, the FinCom is, the FinCom Reserve Fund is a little bit different than what the Stabilization Fund is. Now, the FinCom Reserve Fund is something that goes into your operating budget, and that's for extraordinary and unforeseen expenses that happen throughout the year. And the FinCom has the authority to transfer money out of that into whatever line item that we have or that we're requesting. That number was, it reached a high of around $515,000 effective, I think, two to three fiscal years ago. As part of the budget process over the, in the budget cycles over the next two to three years, that slowly got eroded down to $400,000. And so, what we're doing here is increasing that appropriation back to $450,000. Doesn't mean we're going to use it. It just means it increases that appropriation, the money is in there.
All right. Last question. This is the hard one. And this is not a term that I may have used, but I've heard this frequently, that the Town has, quote, "slush funds." And in this case, you're referring with FinCom, the way you explained, the way I'd understand it is that for certain situations, there may be appropriate times that they need to have a source of money so that they can react, hopefully, in the Town's best interest with whatever judgment they might use.
Right. So, yeah, so they're not slush funds. So, I mean, the Finance Reserve Fund is established in statute. So, if you look up reserve funds, you'll see in the statute, I mean, it specifically talks about, you know, these reserve funds, talks about the Finance Committee, and, you know, how much you can put in there and so forth, so.
Historically, what we've used them for, Joel, has been legal expenses a couple of years ago, but mainly, it's used for snow and ice.
Ah, interesting. So, the essence of the question here is, how do we balance a call, let's say, for a special Town Meeting because some, something has come up that we don't want to wait until the next Town Meeting? It could be significant. I mean, a half a million dollars is, to me, is a significant amount if they were to spend all of that. If it's historically used in a limited basis for a heavy winter snow season, that sounds certainly legitimate to me. I guess the question is, how do we balance having this large fund there where a small group of people has total control over the spending? And yet, at Town Meeting, when we vote on the budget, there are some line items we're voting on that are $200, $300, $400. It's that small that we elect to turn this over to the Town. So, I guess that's my question is, you know, I don't want to use the word "slush fund" in a negative context, but let's just say that it's a fairly sizable amount of money handled by a very small group of people without Town Meeting approval, other than in the generic sense of, well, we want to have this allowance there. How do we balance those interests and decide when there really should be a special Town Meeting if there's a project that's come up that FinCom might want to take on?
Right. Well, certainly, as I mentioned before, I mean, it's established in statute. So, I mean, there's some, you know, criteria there. As Michael mentioned, it's for, you know, these unforeseen or emergency type of things that come up, such as snow and ice or other things that weren't foreseen. Because, you know, you don't want to turn up and be calling a special Town Meeting every, you know, every time you turn around. But, you know, with a $50 million general operating budget, a half a million dollars or $450,000 actually isn't that much money. You know, if something major were to happen, that amount of money isn't necessarily a lot. When you look at our snow and ice bill from last year is just an example for that. And I think over the course of the couple of years that we've been here, absent snow and ice and some of the legal things, which were by and large passed all of that, thankfully, there's been a couple of emergency requests, but they've been small. So, it's not, it's not something that the Finance Committee's ever taken lightly. We have to go in, we have to explain it to them, they ask a lot of questions, and then ultimately, they, you know, they vote on that. So, that's how the Reserve Fund works. And every community that I know of actually, you know, has one of those for exactly those reasons. But as anything else, you know, as a citizen, you hold the folks accountable and say, okay, you know, last year, what did you spend the Reserve Fund on? And that's all documented in minutes and votes on what they actually spent it on. So, there's checks and balances there, and certainly in terms of if folks have questions about what it's being used for.
Okay. Mark DiSsoni. I'll make this short. You said there was going to be an increase in the school by $75,000?
Correct.
What's the rest of the Town, other than the Treasury being broken down because of Human Resources, what's the rest of the Town going to get out of the appropriations?
Well, again, I think I'm understanding your question, Mark, is that, again, the Town's getting, you know, establishing a Human Resources Department. Now, hopefully, in the future, that's going to be one of those departments that we can consolidate with the schools and actually share resources in an effort to increase efficiency throughout the departments. But in terms of a net increase, you know, the Human Resources and the Reserve Fund, again, that's not a school budget item, but, you know, that's $140,000 right there. You know, if, we didn't necessarily look at it as, you know, what's the schools getting versus what are the municipal departments getting? We looked at what the need was and, you know, what should be done.
I promise to be short tonight. And I came in earlier about the override, and that's where that question's coming from with this. Municipalities will get something, but the Human Resource part and schools are going to get theirs before them.
No.
Then explain why, in the, I'm confused then. The solar projects that the school is supposed to get, they're not getting on time.
Correct.
That, they're not getting until maybe this Town Meeting. Some of that might, could be brought to the Town somehow? Without the school getting what they need right now, who in the Town use some of that as a present time to what the school is waiting to get?
Again, the Town is using some of that, is getting some of that.
And what departments? That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Human Resources Department. Yeah. Well, the schools are one department, too.
Ed Brutsch, 38 Olive Street. My question's on assessments. Housing cost, you look at the paper and you see the housing of Hopkinton, Southborough, Holliston, they've all increased. We've slowly creeping up. What are we doing for reassessment or where is our property valuations going?
Well, we just did a revale. So, I mean, our property valves have gone up. What's the new one? Is it $399,000? And that's up.
$399,000 up from $378,000.
So, we just had what's called a revale. They do a full revale every three years.
When's our next revale update?
In a couple of years.
Couple of weeks?
No, years. We just finished one.
We just finished one.
We just finished one. So, you'll see that, and this, again, this is average, so some people go up more, some people go up less, but for the average, went up from $378,000 to $399,000. That's for that average, that's a single-family home.
Okay. Is there any reason why the property values in Ashland have not kept up with the surrounding towns? We see about 20% less valuation in Ashland than our surrounding neighbors.
Well, I mean, that's a function of the market and supply and demand.
And what people are willing to pay.
Yeah. I mean, at this point in time, you know, I guess you could, you know, discern that people are willing to pay more to live in Hopkinton, for whatever reason. I mean, not making any kind of judgment call on that. You know, the, I should say that the assessments are different than appraisals and sales price, even though assessments are based on sales price. It's usually, there's usually a lag time associated with that. Can tell you, I mean, I just saw a statistic recently that the house, the houses or the towns where houses are selling the fastest in Massachusetts, Ashland is number one. So, I mean, there's certainly some demand here. Why that hasn't creeped up and impacted the price as much as maybe other communities, I can't tell.
And there's been quite a, I mean, you hear, you know, there's quite a few properties that have gone for more than asking price in Ashland, too. So, you know, I think it's a very desirable community, and it's affordable, because not everybody can afford to live in Hopkinton or Wellesley or some of those places. But, you know, Ashland, you know, has, I think, attracted folks to it because of its affordability. But it's all market-driven. It's not really something we drive, but, thank you. Any other questions on this one? Steve?
Yeah, I had a question and a comment, I guess, on Article Two. This is the first I heard of the HR Department. I'm just curious what public meeting or what process was used to create those changes? In particular, I guess, I heard you say earlier there'll be a budget, but I didn't see this in the prior warrant when it was discussed. So, I'm kind of curious how this got to this point without there being a budget. And, you know, again, maybe I missed it. I've attended a lot of meetings recently, and these are the first time at this forum a few days before that I'm hearing about these items, which I think actually should be, you know, warrant in writing already. So, I'm wondering, you know, if you could comment on where that was all vetted? And I share the comment that was made about disclosure for the meeting. I don't know what the actual documents will be at the meeting, but, you know, it would seem like it would be beneficial for everybody to understand these budgetary changes, why they've occurred. I didn't hear any mention of the state appropriation for the schools, which is a substantial change from budget that was realized by the Town. I know we haven't received the funds, but it's in the budget. And so, there would appear to be some other factors that are also, you know, in the mix with regard to the overall budget for the year. So, I'd be interested in some further comments around that.
Let me start from the back, so if I can remember that one and go backwards. So, what Steve is referring to is the $500,000 that the Town is expecting to get for overcrowding for the schools. We haven't received that money yet. It's not in the budget yet. It's in the state budget, but it's not in our budget, so we don't have it yet. Related to the HR Department, I mean, it's been discussed at a number of Board of Selectmen meetings, you know, going back, you know, probably more than a year as an initiative when I first got here and realized that a town of our size with the number of employees we have, the complexities of human resources today, it's very fractured in the Town right now. It's covered in a number of different offices. There's not any coordination. I mean, Michael has triple-hatted essentially as the Assistant Town Manager, the Finance Director, the HR Director, I mean, I pick up a piece of that. It's not the way it should be done at all. And so, the Board of Selectmen, I believe, more than a year ago, at one of our retreats, tasked me with getting an HR Department stood up for the Town. It's also one of their goals and objectives for this year, to get an HR Department established. And so, as we got into this fiscal year and had that tasking, which is for FY '16, this article establishes that department. I mean, having an HR Department doesn't need to be a separate warrant article. The only thing that needs to happen is, when the funding is allocated, we'll present a reorganization plan, if you want to call it that, or an organization plan to the Selectmen to establish this new department per the charter. And upon their approval, that HR Department is established. So, that's how the process works in the Town based on the Charter and the Selectmen.
Sure. Just a quick follow-up on that. So, I understand that. This is a Fall Town Meeting. This isn't the original 2016 budget. So, all of these things, I think, have to be viewed from the lens of changes that are not planned in 2016 but are perhaps desired. And to that end, I would have thought that that would have come up in the actual Town Meeting, which would have perhaps gotten additional attention in putting the 2016 budget together. It looks like there's a lot buried in here, and there's not a lot of words here, at least currently. So, that's.
You'll see that in the motion, but what I would say is that, you know, there were some initiatives that we had, the same with, you know, bringing on an Economic Development Director, again, which is another one that's been tasked to us to establish. You know, when we did the 2016 budget, there were some things within our budget, particularly in the healthcare, and Michael mentioned, you know, some of the healthcare stuff. You know, we didn't know until essentially the fiscal year started where all the employees were going to land in terms of choosing their healthcare providers and what the actual savings to the Town was. And so, you know, what you see in some of these adjustments related to that are an effect of that. So, we couldn't really talk about it at Spring Town Meeting because it wasn't part of the budget until we actually knew exactly, you know, how the numbers were going to play out with health insurance. So, but when you get your packet at Town Meeting, you'll have all the budgetary adjustments for each, and the majority of them are small, and they're really related to the shifting of the salary reserve to the different departments to cover the pay. All right. So, Article Three is free cash allocation sponsored by the Board of Selectmen to see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be placed in the General Stabilization Fund, the OPEB Stabilization Fund, the Special Education, Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, and/or the capital account. So, our free cash came in this year at $1,034,083, which is right around 2% of our general operating budget. And so, based on the stabilization fund policy that the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee all collaborate on and sign, has us putting 60% of that number into the General Stabilization Fund, which will be $620,499.80. It also calls to have 15% of that amount going into the Special Education Stabilization account of $155,112, and 15% into the capital account at $155,112. And then, finally, 10% going into the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which was established last year. And that amount will be $103,408.30. And so, that's in accordance with the recently signed stabilization fund policy. I don't know if you want to add anything else related to that, but.
No, I mean, I think we should point out that, yes, the Reserve Fund policy was modified this year, and there were a couple, two main points, I think, that really we need to call attention to. Number one is we added the addition to the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which is something that was established in, at the Spring Town Meeting. And this provides for a way to fund that using one-time resources, which is the free cash number. Number two, as part of this modification of the Reserve Fund policy, we also have agreement on the fact that we will not take out money from our General Stabilization Fund to balance our budget unless there are some extreme circumstances that happen and economic forces that befall us, or, you know, fall upon us, I should say, that we would really have no control over. And that is a significant win for the Town. This is, you know, we talk about a structural deficit a lot, and, you know, what actually defines a structural deficit? Well, anytime you start using your one-time revenues to help balance your ongoing expenses, that is a structural deficit. And this Town has done it for the last 10-plus years by going to the Stabilization Fund to help balance its budget. And so, with the signing of this Reserve Policy, we're proud to say that, you know, it looks like that practice has finally come to an end. And I think that's going to be for the benefit of the whole Town.
Okay. Property tax exemptions, Article Four. See if the Town will.
By many, Tony.
Yep, sure.
Just want to make a comment. I know this is being televised, but I just want to point out that the Article Number Three deals with stabilization funds, except in regards to capital. And the intent here, as I understand it, is to put the capital free cash funds into an active capital account in 2016.
Correct.
My personal view and suggestion is that that ought to be put in the stabilization fund, just like all of the other items in that article. And so, I know this was drafted independent of participation by the Capital Committee. I'm a member of that committee, and I don't speak for the committee, but I would suggest that this Article Three should more appropriately put capital reserves into the capital stabilization fund, similar to all of the other stabilization funds, as opposed to what's happening now, where that money will be put into the active 2016 capital and be spent prior to Spring Town Meeting. I would be much more comfortable putting the money into the stabilization fund, letting the Capital Committee do its work, and come back in the spring meeting and give a prioritized list of projects as part of the broader Town Meeting. So, just my comment.
Okay. And just to be, just to be clear, I mean, the way this article is drafted is in accordance with our policy, but the Capital Improvement Committee did vote to put this money into the active capital account, not the stabilization fund. So, that is, that's my understanding, so.
So, I would disagree with that, Tony. I know you're also a member of the Capital Committee. We voted specifically that if that money were put into the active account, that money would be used to approve the, I think, $185,000 downtown siding project, or half of that amount in the first year. So, in fact, there was no vote on the policy, but there was a vote that if the money was moved into an active account, it would be spent on half of the signed policy as a contingent vote. So, I.
Well, that's correct. And the Capital Improvement Committee doesn't actually vote on the policy. It's a Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee policy. So, that's why that article's drafted that way. Certainly, the Town has extensive capital needs, well in excess of what it can spend. And so, you know, there's a list that we actually never actually get to because there's so many capital needs of the Town, since the Town has just not had the funding to, you know, really keep its capital projects in good order. So, thank you for those comments, and we will see where Town Meeting goes. Property tax exemptions to see if the Town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for property tax exemption for senior citizens under Mass. General Law 59, Section Five, Clause 41(c)(1/2) to be effective. For exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. So, for this particular article, the Board of Assessors have recommended a percentage of 8.75%. For those that have been around for a while, we, the percentage typically lands somewhere around a $500 exemption, and I believe this year it's 514, is that right?
Correct.
That sound right? $514 exemption for seniors that qualify for this 41(c)(1/2) exemption. So, very similar to last year, just the percentage has changed.
First question. If the Town chose to, would it be lawful to index this exemption to either the Social Security Fund increase, you know, payment, whether that goes up or down, or to housing prices? In other words, at that 8.75%, if we have seen overall, you were saying, an increase in property values in Town, you're saying that they're targeting the 500, is that the goal? So, if the values go up, the percentage permitted is adjusted accordingly to target it at 500?
I think it was like maybe 9% last year, I think.
Okay. So, basically, the amount is targeted to stay at the 500.
Roughly 500, yeah.
Okay. And I just saw an article in the paper, I don't know, two or three weeks ago about NADIC, which was not the exemption per se, but there's something called the Tax Deferral Program where seniors are, under certain circumstances, eligible to not pay any property taxes or some percentage.
Correct.
Until the house is eventually sold.
Correct.
Or transferred of ownership. So, is that something we have here in Ashland? What are the rates there? And do we, does that ever get looked at by the FinCom? That's outside of this.
Yeah. It doesn't get looked at by the FinCom. We do have it. It's not very well taken advantage of. In fact, as we've kind of gone through this override discussion and started looking at property tax relief programs, we've realized that we really don't do a very good job of advertising the programs that we currently have. As you said, there's a rate, an interest rate associated with that in which the property is around 4%, which, that is the rate at which the deferred taxes accrue interest. And then, there's also a cap associated with how much, you know, total you can exempt, which I think ours is around 55,000. which I think ours is around $55,000. So again, it's, it's something that we do have, it's something that we could, you know, look at advertising more, and I'm not sure exactly how much we can adjust it. I'm sure there is some local control that we have over it to make some adjustments. But again, it's something we have. And just to explain a little bit more of what it is, is it allows seniors that qualify to defer their taxes over a course of several years until it reaches that cap. And so those deferred taxes actually become a lien, essentially a lien on the property. And so when the property is sold or otherwise disposed of, the proceeds from that sale, part of those proceeds go to pay off that lien.
There also is, is there not in Ashland, a eligibility, eligibility income level that you have to meet to be even eligible to be part of this?
Correct, age and income.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next article is from the Community Preservation Committee, related to the Affordable Housing Trust. So Steve Greenberg is here. Steve, maybe if you could come up to the microphone and just give a little background on this particular article, and it's to see if the town will vote to appropriate $450,000 in Community Preservation Act funds to the Ashland Housing Trust, established by Town Meeting, November 14, 2007, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), under Chapter 3 of the town's general bylaws, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of $450,000 to be transferred from the CPC Fund, Community Housing Reserve Account balance, subject to the execution of a grant agreement by and between the trust and the Community Preservation Committee prior to the distribution of said funds, or take any vote or any action relative thereto.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Michael. If I could, I'd like to maybe start with a little bit of history relative to funding of the Affordable Housing Trust. Back in 2007, 2008, Town Meeting approved $500,000 to be allocated to the housing trust. Since that time, in the past six or seven years, the trust has done about 18 different transactions relative to America's Boulevard, buying and reselling units. When that happens, there are repairs, there's maintenance, and there is the cost of getting the property conveyed through legal and, and other expenses. But in addition to that, we've funded, we being the trust, have funded a portion of the comprehensive plan. We spent some money on due diligence on the Valentine property a few years ago, and recently paid a consultant to give us some light conceptuals on projects at Main and Cherry Street and at Western Nurseries. So with those transactions, with those expenses, the other major expense that the trust went through was in the purchase of Sixth Cherry Street for $250,000. We recently purchased a unit at America's Boulevard for $180,000 and change, so our current balance is somewhere in $35,000, $36,000. This past summer, the Faford Companies, as the real estate market has changed, it's more aggressive, the Faford Companies at America's Boulevard and other streets off the, off of Chestnut, offered in a lottery eight units to be sold through a lottery to qualified affordable buyers. Purchase price was around $177,000. Those buyers are all, have to be income-eligible and credit-worthy. So with those eight units coming on as additional inventory at America's Boulevard, it creates a little stress on the trust if, in fact, we have to purchase more than one, possibly two, three, maybe even four units. The capital just isn't there to help these families move along. As the story goes here in Ashland, when someone buys an, either an affordable unit, or for that matter, young people, when they buy a market unit at the condos, they're two bedrooms. Their family expands, their income grows, and it's time to move on. So it was supposed to be this fall, but more likely this spring, there'd be an additional eight units offered by the Faford Companies in an affordable lottery. So we're going to have a lot more units available, so to help us facilitate, again, the purchase, take care of the maintenance, refurbish some of these units, and get them sold again, we need the capital to carry those costs. And whatever other affordable expenses may come up, or projects that might come up, or purchases that might be available, that further Ashland's affordable housing stock or maintain that stock, that's the purpose for requesting those funds.
Okay. Any questions? Joel?
Okay, let's see, where do we go with this? The first question I have is if we wanted to study the, the trust's history with regard to the various transactions over the last few years, are those documents publicly available to us? Would we be able to see them? Are they online?
I'm not sure the income and expenses are online, they could be put online.
Okay, I just make that a general request. I mean, you know, it would help us analyze the history of activity. Can you elaborate a little bit more on, specifically on, you had talked about the Valentine properties, that you had spent some money there? Can you elaborate a little bit about what those expenses were and what, what the objective was?
I can't remember how many years ago, three, four, five years ago, the developer approached the town, myself, Selby, and a member of the Historic Commission met with the developer, and they wanted to work out a development plan with the town that would offer affordable housing and market-rate housing. So we did some due diligence on the barn, we did some due diligence on the house, we did appraisals, we did home inspections, and looked at potential development there, but the timing wasn't suitable to the developer. There were some delays in the town's process, so we never went forward with the original development, which would have been a lot less large than the current project that's being, being developed.
Last, I guess this is kind of a comment and a question, I guess. One of the things that seems to happen here in Ashland, and perhaps elsewhere, Cherry Street is a very good example of this, you have a situation where you have competing interests, you have a desire to have more affordable housing, and you have a funded trust to go about handling the finances and the property management and so on. You also have the Historical Commission also seeking to acquire properties. And the concern that I have isn't that we shouldn't do both of these things, it's that we don't have a level playing field. We have a situation, take Cherry Street as a perfect example, where both organizations sought, as, this is my recollection, sought to have the property be utilized for different purposes. And we have the trust with a well-funded, or somewhat well-funded, or at least funded amount of funds, and the Historical Commission not so much so. So, you know, we have a legitimate argument, I think, that gets made on the trust, saying that they need to be able to react to the market and have a, have a balance there, so that they can do something in a timely manner and not wait six months for the next town meeting. But we don't have a similar setup for the Historical Commission, is it? Or I'm not sure what, what gets funded there.
But there's historical and CPA funds, though.
Exactly, and, but there, there we tend to fund things on a project-by-project basis, and we don't, so that, we have a situation where it's, like I say, it's not a level playing field, and, you know, it's not just directed at this particular article, but I think we need to look at that and find a better way for these two committees to work cooperatively, to strike a balance, and I don't, I don't think we've achieved that in the way we do funding here. Just a comment.
Well, and as you know, I mean, through the CPC, I mean, all those come to Town Meeting, so the town, you know, ends up voting on those, so, you know, a lot of that work should happen within the Community Preservation Committee, I would think, in, in developing a long-term plan.
I have a question about, so the affordable housing units at Faford Village of the Americas, are those deeded? Because I know, I mean, I've gone to the housing presentations, and we have some housing stock that's deeded affordable, means in perpetuity, and some that isn't, and I'm wondering what those are and how that has to do with us buying and reselling.
Faford is the developer, was part of a local initiative at Town Meeting many years ago, where that subdivision was approved, and when it was approved, 10% of the residential units were deemed affordable. So when those units are sold, those affordable units are sold by the Faford Companies, there is a deed restriction, and this is managed and overseen by the Department of Housing and Community Development. They approve each buyer, they approve each sale. So once Faford has conveyed those properties out, they're done with it. So the reason the trust was established by the state was to give a body in town the ability to act, as Joel had suggested, rather than having to wait for Town Meeting. So when the Affordable Trust buys it, its intent is to maintain the existing affordable housing stock, and then resell that unit to a new qualified buyer with a very similar deed restriction. And that's basically how it works. If you have any other questions or something I didn't touch upon?
Okay, so if this is, if it's deed restricted, and the Affordable Housing Trust did nothing, what would happen?
As, as time marches on, if the trust didn't step in, then I think it's 90 days after the owner, excuse me, the unit owner notifies the town manager that he wants to, or she wants to resell that unit after a certain period of time. If either the town or another affordable buyer has not stepped up to purchase that unit, then that unit could be sold to a non-affordable buyer, but the property would still maintain the deed restriction. So the appreciation on the property is limited.
Okay, real quick, this is affordable housing, and Faford's been mentioned now. Can any other housing corporation come into town and ask for affordable housing?
As it stands right now, until the Affordable Housing Plan is completed and approved by the state, the town, because it does not have 10% of its housing stock deemed as affordable, the town is subject to any 40b by any developer, whether it's the Valentine property. Ashland Woods just recently started renting out their units, that's a, that's an old 40b that got approved a number of years ago, the market changed. Originally, it was going to be for-sale units, that was changed to rental, rental units. But 25% of those are rented to affordable, 75% to market. So until an affordable housing plan is approved, the Zoning Board of Appeals has to deal with any 40b that comes to town.
So I have a, I have a comment on this. I recently attended a Finance Committee meeting where this actually was on the agenda, I didn't realize it was on the agenda. And I subsequently attended a CPC meeting about this article. So it's a new topic to me, I wasn't, wasn't here in town for any of the history, but what I learned from attending those meetings is that firstly, there's no plan currently in place for specific projects for this money. There was a lot of interest by CPC to have a plan before they approved this project, a lot of back and forth. I personally am uncomfortable moving money without a plan for a project. I learned about this Cherry Street property, which I was not previously aware of. $250,000 has been sitting at Cherry Street for three years almost now. No project, no affordable housing, not clear to me how that decision was made, but I would suggest that that quarter of a million dollars has been sitting there, not providing affordable housing, and the decision process around Sixth Cherry Street was not well thought out. I understand there's still not a plan in place for Sixth Cherry Street, three, three almost years later. And, and so finally, just to comment, I know, we haven't met on this in the Capital Committee, but I would suggest that the Capital Committee is an advisory committee to the town. Affordable housing is an asset of the town. It was stated at the meetings that I attended that they didn't even need insurance because they're part of the town. And so I think that the Affordable Housing Committee, just like any other, you know, project that's coming through the town committees to planning, zoning, conservation, should be coming over to capital and getting, giving us an advanced opportunity to provide an advice opinion. Now, in fact, it's just advice, but, you know, we didn't have, I guess, the committee might not have been fully formed at that time or active, but I would suggest going forward that any kind of a capital purchase like this to buy facilities in town should be on a project plan, should come to the appropriate committees for review. I think some of these may actually be over in planning or conservation now, they haven't come to capital. So that's just my comments.
So just one clarification, though, Steve, just to, the distinction between a committee and a trust, and Steve can comment on this. I mean, the, the trust is established with trust documents and, and all of that, so, you know, if you haven't read those, you know, you probably want to read those because, you know, they, and Steve, you can probably, you know, comment on that, but there's certain things in those trust documents that allows them to do certain things.
Right, so I would suggest that, you know, I have read some of the documents after I became aware of the issue. I understand there was an Affordable Housing Committee, which has apparently had trouble meeting over the past years. There's some activity to perhaps disband that committee in favor of the trust. You know, a lot is going on there, but the trust is asking for $450,000 while tying up a quarter of a million dollars in an unfinished project. And that just seems to me to be a rather questionable path, certainly to Joel's comment earlier, if, if the trust came to committees with a project, the Historical Commission came with a project, you know, people could evaluate it out in the open, and I think that's the appropriate path. Certainly, you know, there is certain requirements for affordable housing, but it's as true of any other board in town, you know, you don't necessarily have exclusive jurisdiction, but as, as part of, you know, speaking as, only for myself as, as a member, not for the board, you know, I would expect any major capital purchase in the town to, to come in front of the committee in advance so that we could offer our advisory opinion, you know, people could follow it or not, but certainly, as a bylaw committee, should have an opportunity to comment on projects before people buy buildings and then sit on them for three years. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Article number six, Acceptance of Real Property. I'm not going to keep reading all these things, I know you have them in front, but this one is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, is related to the Rail Transit District Agreement, where the landowner of the Rail Transit District is gifting to the town approximately six acres located off the MBT Access Road. In the, in the actual agreement, it's for a potential public safety facility or some other municipal purpose. And I just want to, to mention, all this article does is author, a Town Meeting authorizes the Board of Selectmen to accept the property as a gift, once they've completed any required due diligence that they feel is necessary on the property. So just, I want to make that distinction, this isn't the acceptance of the gift, it's just authorizing the Board of Selectmen to accept the gift and execute any documents related thereto, and that'll be in the motion, that it's subject to the due diligence on the property before they take control of it. And well, for that, for this article too, just, you know, we'll have a map that we'll put up on the, on the screen that kind of gives a general description of the, of the property and its, and its rough location.
Awesome. Okay, as a person who's been following this, the gain of property and all this, from the years on past, what would happen if the town hall, in a close vote, says no? What would happen?
Well, the land would stay in the possession of Mr. Gainer to do with it what he wants in terms, you know, subject to obviously any permits or whatever, so, you know, the land would continue to be his.
And again, because I know this is, this might be contested throughout the Town Meeting, this may be the night part of the meeting, what would happen if it does get passed? What will be the, the finances and property for that? Would that be entailed on lots one, two, or three? And when how, when how quickly will that be coming? Or will we have to, would the town have to wait until Lot 1 is done? The way it was planned at out of the land board before you, Selectmen, it was say, this, this part first, this part second, and this third. It's broken down to this, but this in town, you will be waiting for a opportunity to get a public safety building. And Gainer, Mr. Gainer, in his old JPI, had an idea for it, but because of the economics, real estate turn downs, and how it was slowing down, couldn't get it then. This is the second bite. So I'm, I'm coming up and saying, it's going to be... So, I'm coming up and saying it's going to be closely contested that night on the town meeting, hopefully, because it is important. And hopefully, then, it's Mr. Gainer or somebody from his development company will be there to hear questions if they stand up, they take questions from town people, because they want to know, as I've been following, that they want to keep informed if there's going to be a multi-safety building involved. And Mr. Gainer, who is a good businessperson, wants to do right by the town, and so the developer can come up with a good plan either way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure I totally grasped the entirety of your question. Don't, you'll have to repeat it. Let me see if I can take a hack at it. So, the question of the transfer, just give me one second here. So, based on the agreement we have, it looks, I'm reading here, so first of all, it is on Lot Three, by the way. It's on that side of the MBT Access Road. It's about 1,700 feet down the road on the side that Dunkin' Donuts was on. And essentially, it looks like the location of the property set forth will be deeded to the town with the formal acceptance thereof at the fall town meeting, obviously subject to the selectmen's review. So, it doesn't, it's not, it's not subject to the completion of Lot One or anything else, or they're totally, they're totally separate. So, does that answer your question about when and where it is?
I'll make a shot.
Okay.
Well, I could get Joe up here. Oh, I make it the two other tape of contents in. Okay, then, that just tells us about when, the lot in Lot Three in order of, but to make a concluded positive hope it happens, have that building there, but then again, we could look for some sort of economic, he did say, Mr. Gainer in his development company, he say, other than the multi-public building, he's going to put a supermarket up there too, so.
Well, yeah, not on this piece, but.
On another piece, yeah. That's all.
Yeah, the majority of Lot Three is available for commercial and other development activities.
This parcel is near and dear to my heart. We in town are working on the Ashland section of the Upper Charles Trail, and I first want to thank the town. Is this correct? My understanding is that the town along the Access Road is going to be building a 12-foot wide roughly path from the 135 light all the way to the train station.
Correct.
Which is great. That really helps us as well. I also want to thank both Mr. Gainer and Mr. Geisinger, who is one of the developers of Lot One from Campanelli and Thordike. I met with them last Tuesday morning. There's a question at the end of this. I just want you to know that. This isn't a speech about the trail. But I just want to make everyone aware that they have been extremely generous to us, and both Mr. Gainer and Mr. Geisinger have granted us the right to build a trail from High Street through the woods, across Lot One and Two. And Mr. Gainer has also agreed, crossing the Access Road, to allow us to build a trail around the cap and all the way down to McGonko Road on the old trolley line. So, my question is, first question is, is the location of these roughly six acres on co-urbanized yet? And can, or if not, can we get it there so that we can see exactly where they are going to be located?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe they're on co-urbanized unless there's an overall picture of the entire Rail Transit District, because obviously, that's on there. Just to give you some perspective, you know where the trolley, the old trolley line is?
Yes.
If you're, you know, standing in the street, you know, looking at the woods, it's just to the left of that. So, this parcel actually almost butts right up to that trolley line, just to give you an idea of where it is.
Do you know whether, because it's something our committee would be very interested in. I mean, we haven't voted on this formally, but we have voted to make that part of our trail.
Sure.
Going down the trolley line to McGonko. One of the objectives here, as you know, is to have the town have control over not just the construction, but also the future maintenance of the trail.
Right.
So, to whatever extent it might be feasible to incorporate at least some allowance for the width of the trail down to McGonko Road, such that, you know, either through an easement or as part of the acreage being donated, that would be extremely helpful.
I think it would probably be more through an easement, because this acreage isn't, doesn't encompass that.
Okay.
It's just to the side of that, but I think the appropriate way to do it would be through some type of a permanent easement for the town.
Either would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Article number seven, Repeal of Chapter 281A of the Town of Ashland Bylaws. To see if the town will vote to repeal in its entirety, the bylaw known as Chapter 281A Youth Activity that was adopted in Article 13 of the 2009 special town meeting or pass any route or take any action relative thereto. So, this particular bylaw has to do with where sex offenders and how close they can get to different youth activities. There was a Supreme Judicial Court ruling that came out, I believe it was this past summer, versus the City of Lynn, where the SJC struck down any, you know, essentially local bylaws that were more restrictive related to where sex offenders could live and so forth, that were more restrictive than what the statute and the laws allow. And so, communities that have such bylaws are not enforceable and essentially need to be repealed in order to prevent any liability on the town if we have some bylaw that's not in accordance with the law and/or, you know, one that we can't enforce. And so, this is to ask town meeting to repeal this bylaw based on that Supreme Judicial Court ruling that came out this past summer. So, Mr. Miniani is going to speak to this article. He has the legal opinion from town council, and certainly, she'll probably speak to this as well from a legal perspective on why this article is necessary to do that. I know it's, for all of us, tends to be a very emotional type of an article in the protection of our youngsters and the public in general, but that came out of a Supreme Judicial Court ruling for the state this past summer. Article number eight, amend the Town of Ashland Commercial Vehicle Bylaw. I'm not going to read all that text. And so, we've had some issues recently with either abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles, unregistered vehicles. And so, a number of years ago, the town adopted the statute that would allow for the issuance of fines in those particular cases, yet the town never established a fine schedule to go along with it. So, essentially, the only thing that we had available to us under Chapter 265 was essentially a criminal citation by the police, which would put it right into, you know, right into the criminal court system and really didn't have much in between that. So, and so, what we've done now is, because we have adopted the statute, we've now established a non-criminal fine structure that will give the police department the ability and the building commissioner the ability to essentially, you know, first, you know, notify the person if there's a violation, certainly, you know, begin to issue fines. The Board of Selectmen can call them before them for a hearing, and then they also have the criminal disposition. So, it gives us a couple of different layers to go through if we find that somebody is in violation of the bylaw related to either, you know, vehicles abandoned, unregistered, or junked and not in compliance with the bylaw. So, as you can see in the article, for the first offense, it's $50, second, or all subsequent events are $100, and they can be issued by either the building inspector or the police department related to that. Only the police department can issue the criminal misdemeanor citations to any offenders. So, questions on that?
So, I have a quick comment. I heard this being discussed at the Finance Committee, and I just want to make sure it's clear to everyone that this is a per-day fine.
Correct.
And so, this isn't an actual ticket value. This is per day until a vehicle is removed. And, you know, just for myself, I think this is rather excessive. I don't know how many situations there are like this, but I would favor a fine schedule that was a specific amount, like a traffic ticket, where people get fined a certain amount until they come for a hearing. These kind of open-ended per-day fines, I would disfavor them personally, and that's just a feedback.
Okay.
That I would think of an appropriate fixed fine until you get an opportunity to be heard might be a more appropriate way to address it.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, article number nine is to transfer care, custody, and control of Warren Woods. So, if we all remember back, Warren Woods is approximately 117 acres, with 101 acres currently under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission. It's Article 97 land. And then, there's 16 acres. That's really what you see when you drive along the street in terms of the field area along both Elliott and Chestnut Street. That is currently under the control of the Board of Selectmen. They took a vote a while back to transfer a portion of that property, approximately 15 acres, to the Conservation Commission to be under their care, custody, and control. And approximately a one-acre piece around the, you know, the shed area and the parking lot would remain under Board of Selectmen control. And so, this particular article is related to the transfer of roughly, you know, 657,240 square feet. We'll have a plan that will show up that'll show, and I have it up here if anybody wants to look at it after, but it'll show essentially what we're calling the building envelope, which is that one-acre piece, but what we're actually transferring at town meeting is everything but the one-acre piece, but we'll have that actually. And what's that's going to allow us to do is it'll allow us to have one conservation restriction for the Conservation Commission for their 116 acres minus the one acre. All right? So, and then, that will allow, you know, certain other types of activities to take place inside that one acre, should the town someday get a barn there, be able to do, you know, educational activities or other community events that, you know, typically wouldn't be allowed on, you know, Article 97 land, those type of activities. So, any questions related to this article? Mark?
I know this is separate from what recently went down in a couple of meetings with another part of Warren Woods, but is this what that red shed in the parking, open field is? Or across the street?
No, where the red shed is in the parking lot, right at Warren Woods.
Okay.
What's across the street is the Warren Conference Center, not Warren Woods.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, you didn't say anything about what, we went down in a couple of meetings about another part of Warren Woods on Chestnut and Prospect, Elliott Street, but that's separate, right?
That's Article 12. We're getting there. We're only on nine.
Okay.
What's that? Is he talking about Chestnut Street? Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a, yeah, sorry, Mark.
Okay, so, it's not on there? It's not on there?
No, 466 Chestnut and 22 Elliott Street. Yeah, that's not part of town meeting.
Okay. So, this is old news to what's going to happen. So, this is a different envelope, in other words, from that, as one you selectmen set at the meeting. I came for conservation last night, so I'm going to leave that alone.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to leave that alone. So, that's going to be a yes or no vote, up and down. People who don't, thank you, people who don't know it, may not have, is having trouble following it. I don't know as much, but I know a little bit of it, but not much. What will it be used for if town meeting passes? What's it slated for?
So, I mean, to put it simply, if the town meeting votes to approve this Warren article, essentially, the, everything but that one-acre envelope, right, all the fields along Elliott and Chestnut, will essentially be treated the same as Warren Woods. So, it'll be Article 97 land. It'll have a conservation restriction that will essentially be consistent with what's, you know, already been drafted and approved for the 101 acres. So, essentially, for conservation purposes. So, it'll essentially be treated the same, if you're familiar with the other one. Okay? All right. Article number 10 is to amend the general bylaws related to tobacco sales. Sponsor is the Board of Health, so I'll just, I talked to Mr. Warren briefly before I came over, so I'll just sort of generally cover it. So, right now, in our Chapter 29, Article One, related to tobacco sales, there's a Section I that essentially covers all the different types of fine, and they don't really break them out. You know, and they have a first offense, a second offense, a third offense, and then each subsequent event, offense. And so, what they've done is they've broke it out to the different violations, if you will, the first being tobacco regulations, sales to minors. There's a first, second, and third offense. They've set the fine at $300 to be consistent with, you know, surrounding towns and what's generally accepted for those type of offenses. J for tobacco regulations, point-of-sale signage. Again, first offense, second offense, third offense are all $50, and each subsequent offense, and then lastly, are all other regulations, if there's any violations. First offense is 100, second offense is 200, third offense is 300, and each subsequent offense is 300 also. That's pretty much the extent of my knowledge, since I didn't sit in the Board of Health meetings, but they'll be available for discussions on this article, should that be necessary. Folks have questions.
I said about two or three of those hearings. Heard the stories of what happened, how it happened, how they have a person go in and the employee sells to a minor, not knowing, not checking IDs and all that stuff. First offense, they got the fine. Second offense, they got a warning. Third offense, they got taken right off the shelves of their establishment and put away. There's been several offenses that the people just lost their license. This is going to make sure that everything stays status quo with the Board of Health and everybody that's working with this to help to keep control of. And they're doing a great job right now doing it, so let's pass this one.
Okay. Okay, Article 11, the West Union Sewer Transmission District Takings. There's a project that'll be commenced sometime in the spring related to doing a sewer line upgrade, essentially from where the Dunkin' Donuts is, across the street through the area of Ashland Commons and President's Row, and then, I'll say, kind of cross-country down to the Chestnut Street pump station. So, related to that, there's some current sewer lines that run through Ashland Commons and President's Row that are obviously necessary for the project. So, a number of years ago, when that project was first approved, the site plan review for that project, and I don't know if it was a special permit or a site plan review, as a provision of that were to be easements granted from the folks that built it to the town for those easements, because anytime we do that, we have to be able to go in and maintain, you know, certain infrastructure that belongs to the town, which it does. Well, that was never executed. So, we've been working with the folks at President's Row and Ashland Commons on this particular issue, and so this article is to ensure that the town eventually will get access to those, you know, that infrastructure under the ground, and it may or may not be necessary to actually execute this, but it will set aside approximately $15,000 should we need to either, you know, purchase or somehow reimburse the folks at Ashland Commons to get access to our infrastructure. Dave Manug will be there to discuss this article, so if you have any general questions, that's fine. I'm certainly not, you know, as versed as he is, as well as Attorney Meach, because they've been working on this together with the folks at Ashland Commons. But if you have any questions, we can certainly at least pass those on and make sure they're prepared for those, you know, next week.
So, this wouldn't necessarily increase the town's sewer capacity? It would be more for, you know, the efficiency of running the sewer system?
So, well, this is just for the, this isn't the actual project, right? I mean, this is to make sure that we have control to be able to actually run. So, the West Union Sewer Transmission District upgrade actually is a bigger pipe, and I'm not sure of the exact size of what it is now, what it's going to, but this is all part of the Mass Works grant to increase the West Union Sewer Transmission District, you know, pipe that runs from the street, you know, from 135 all the way down to the Chestnut Street pump station.
Okay. And same question as before, is this available on co-urbanized, or could it be? So that we can see where this is. The reason I'm asking.
I have maps, and we'll have them there, so, I mean, we can roll these out after, and you can see where they are, and he's got them highlighted and.
I would just like to, again, call to the town's attention, we on the Ashland Upper Charles Trail Committee have a very difficult task here to try to get from one place to another. It's almost impossible in Ashland. You know, it's so developed. So, when we see people banging around and maybe the possibilities of projects coming up, we go, maybe we could do something there.
Sure.
We are trying to move from the end of, at the. We are trying to move from the end of, at the traffic light by the Dunkin' Donuts, the end of the access road, into the state park. And to the extent that there might be an easement or a clearance in the woods, or whatever, you know, whatever town rights of way there might be, we would hope that you would consider consulting with us to see what we could. Maybe, maybe you can aid us in getting from point A to point B.
Sure.
It'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if the West Union Sewer Transmission is part of the Mass Works grant, is that 15, potentially around $15,000 in that? Or is this over and above that? And if so, why can't we put it under that grant? Because I also believe the Rail Transit District said if we can't do what we said we'd do for the grant, that that would come by from the developer.
Right, that's for construction. So this is, this is to get the town's easements that we should already have, based on the prior project. So, so this wouldn't fit within the Mass Works? I mean, we need, this is town, a town issue, I'll say. Because when I, if, when I roll it out, you'll see, I mean, we already have infrastructure right through the middle of Ashland Commons that should have been transferred to the town via easements back when the project was done. So we've been working with them, we're still talking to them. This, I would say, you know, and Dave Manugian and Lisa Meek can certainly confirm this, my understanding, this is really more to ensure that, that we're going to get access if we have to, you know, essentially take action to do an actual taking in order to make that happen. So I think we're confident that, that that's probably not likely, but we need to ensure that the town has the ability to access its infrastructure, notwithstanding, you know, the upgrade and all of that. Because it's still the West Union Sewer Transmission District, right, already. What we're talking about at a Mass Works is essentially upgrading the district with the bigger pipe through this area. So we can roll out the map later, and I'll kind of show you what that looks like. Article 12, the final one, is the purchase of property. You know, this one sort of became public in the last couple of weeks, but, you know, the Warren Conference Center has been owned by Northeastern probably since sometime in the 1960s. And probably a year or two ago, it became known that they were looking to sell the property. And typically for properties like this, you know, you don't drive by, and there's not a sign that says, hey, you know, big, big piece of property for sale. It's roughly 65 acres in total. But we did find out that they were looking to sell. And certainly this property is something that, you know, is very iconic to the town for the history and all of that in that particular area. And so over the course of those, of that couple of years, working with the Selectmen and myself, working with, you know, folks in the state legislature, including Senator Spilka, who will be at town meeting to talk about this particular article, working with the president and Chief Financial Officer of Framingham State, and myself, through the Board of Selectmen, have been working on a plan to make sure that we can save this property from what would essentially, for sure, have been a massive housing development. And there were a lot of interested parties in this. And so through work at the state legislature, they brought $4 million into the FY16 budget. Senator Spilka also was able to get $2.5 million as part of the supplemental budget at the state. And Framingham State came in with some money as well. And through this whole process, and Mr. Mitchell's going to give a more in-depth presentation at town meeting, but the town has always been a player in this to, again, to be a partner with the state and Framingham State in preserving this property. But it became apparent that for Northeastern, they really wanted to work with one buyer versus having to split things up and do, you know, different purchase and sale agreements. So, so essentially, it's going to be one sale of the Warren Conference Center to be purchased by the Mass State College Building Authority for the purpose of Framingham State. And I think folks probably read the article in the paper in terms of, you know, the things they plan on doing there and preserving, you know, the conference center and doing education. And so the town's piece of this is really focused on preserving the historic barn and silo of the property and preserve that historic landmark, if you will. It's roughly about an acre and a half of property, and so the cost of that is roughly $290,000. Michael can speak a little bit to the, to the borrowing of that and what that's going to cost the town. It's relatively minimal for what we're going to actually get for it. I can roll out a map, and you can kind of see where that is. And so what would end up happening, once the state purchases the property for Framingham State, we would then enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the state to buy this one and a half, approximately one and a half acre piece, about 66,000 square feet of the Warren Conference Center, right across from our entrance to Warren Woods. Let's see, there was something else related to that. Oh, so the existing condition report that was done, you know, Framingham State, you know, their, their, you know, focus was on the conference center and doing their education piece. So, you know, they really had no interest in, you know, maintaining a barn or a silo or any of that kind of stuff, because it really wasn't part of their core mission there. But it is important to the, to the town, we feel, and hopefully town meeting will feel the same. So, so that's, that's what this article will do and allow us to do once the final purchase and sale with the state goes through, you know, sometime, probably in the next 60 or 90 days, is my guess.
Okay, and I came up, participation part of it asked the question. Now that I have the understanding, is this part of that, the silo or the barn? Was that part of the yearly negotiations that you wanted to get that was separate from that? To buy the land with the silo and the barn was on?
I'm sorry, Mark, can you say that again? I'm not sure I follow your question.
The, Framingham State, the Mass Colleges has gone by the conference center itself. Was the town involved in, over a year, and negotiated for the barn and silo, the property is separate to keep?
So it is separate. So the, the primary negotiations were taking place between the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, DCAM, as the agent of the state directly with, with Northeastern. But those, those meetings that we had encompassed all of us, right? I mean, encompassed the legislative delegation, the folks from DCAM, the folks from Framingham State, and myself representing the town through the Selectmen participated in all of those. But we didn't sit in on the actual negotiations between DCAM and Northeastern, because that wasn't really our, our place, since we weren't, you know, going to be in that initial sale, if you will.
But you have the interest now for the barn and the silo separate to have. And bringing in Karen Spilka, what's her part would help in to get that done?
Well, I think clearly she had a major part in it. You know, she is from Ashland, I think she understands the importance of the Warren Conference Center and not wanting to see it developed into, you know, a large housing development, which I think, you know, hopefully all of us would, would agree that we didn't really want to see that happen there. So she, you know, in all, you know, essence helped to get, you know, $6.5 million of the purchase price through the, you know, state budget process.
I just have a question. How far does this land go? Does that go past the tennis court, that whole big, large field? And what about the farmhouse that sits even on the other side of that field? Is that all included?
Yes, all, the purchase would be for all 65 acres, which go all the way to--
There's a whole farm over there, farmhouse, right?
Down the far end with the, with the barn, the house that's up close to, yeah, includes all of that and the woods behind, you know, right up to the state forest. Not the state forest, but the state park.
They're going to keep that, they're going to keep that farm over there, or they're going to use that somehow, or they're going to--
Well, look, and I think they're going to use the barn that's there, because I think Northeastern right now uses that to house some of their equipment. But the existing condition report that was done related to the house was not, not very positive at all in terms of its viability. It was not in very good shape at all. So I don't know what their ultimate decision with that will be. I mean, that's--
That's not something that the town is interested in.
Not based on the existing condition report, we won't know.
And I'd like to know, is there any intention of how the barn and silo would be used by the town?
Well, I think that's what, you know, we want to, you know, open that discussion. I mean, I think it does, you know, avail itself of some restoration and potential use. So it's going to go, essentially, if you, if you look at the Warren House and the, and the barn, and kind of, you know, draw a line right between the two is kind of where the 66,000 square feet start. And then if you go to just on the other side of the driveway that goes in, that's, that's essentially, that's essentially the piece that the town would be, would be purchasing. And so by doing it this way, I mean, it does allow the town maximum flexibility to have a discussion about how we would like to use the property and perhaps, you know, as an extension of Warren Woods, or, you know, you know, whatever it thinks would be appropriate. If this article didn't pass, Florence, all that control would be taken out of our hands. So that's why this is important. So we maintain control of that parcel or that piece.
So I just have a question about this. You know, I'm not as familiar with the background of this in terms of the compelling town interest. I drive by the property frequently. But I'm a little concerned about, you know, language in here like "take by eminent domain." Are we talking about purchasing a property? Are we talking about, you know, government action to take, take the property? That's a concern. And my other concern, again, you know, speaking for myself, but as a member of the Capitol Committee, it's very concerning to me that something like this could get to a town meeting without coming in front of our committee. So I don't, perhaps the town has historically, you know, the committee hasn't been that active. But our charter is to review town facilities and buildings and capital requirements. And so purchasing a new building, to the question that just came up, what's the purpose of the building? What are we going to use it for? You know, what need does it serve for the town? These are questions that, you know, ought to be vetted with the Capitol Committee and also with other committees that are involved. So I just, you know, it really surprises me that this has gotten so far, and nobody from the town government has come to the Capitol Committee and put this on our, you know, our advice on the agenda. Now, we may support the project or not, you know, we may not have time to dig into the details, but right now, we haven't even seen the project at the committee. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, there is a swim area on the lake, on the Ashland State Park. And is this included in this property? Or, you know, in that case, you could develop this for recreational use. I'm just curious, the reason of the question.
Are you talking about the, a beach on this, a little beach area?
A roped up swim area.
That's part of the conference center, you mean?
I don't know.
I think, yeah, I think that was maintained by, by Northeastern. Yeah, I'm assuming it's still going to be there. I don't know who uses it. I've never been down there, but--
I would hope it would be part of it, yeah.
Could, yeah.
It's maintained by the--
Yeah. Yeah, and one of the, one of the primary, I mean, you probably, again, you probably read this in the paper. I mean, Framingham State, one of the, you know, for the field areas, you know, they're, they're looking to increase their, you know, Title IX sports, women's sports primarily. They could bring crew to the, to the lake to do those type of sports activities. And again, you know, I think for us doing this, I think will help us to actually build a closer relationship with, with the university than what we have with Northeastern in terms of the fact that they're actually going to be doing education activities. Northeastern primarily runs it as a conference center only. Framingham State's going to continue to do that, because that's a lot of what finances the operations of, of the, the property. But they're actually going to do education there, not just, you know, whether they establish hospitality, but, or science, biology. Certainly Warren Woods, I'm sure, is a prime, you know, research area for them. So as we, you know, look at doing that, I think it's going to allow the town, I think, more access to the, to actually the property and to do things on the, on the conference center property itself and develop a closer relationship. So the Board of Selectmen have tasked me to start to work a memorandum of understanding with Framingham State on some of those type of collaborations. It's a goal that the Selectmen have to, to strengthen the relationship we have with a local university. And to be able to do university-level education in our town, I think, is, is really kind of neat. Yeah, and I have one here. We can lay these out if you just want to take a quick peek, but we'll have one, we'll put up on the, on the slide.
So just to follow up on Ed's comment, you know, I would hope, I would love to see, you know, in the memorandum of understanding or with an easement or however it would work, it would be a nice thing if, if the town, if the public residents of Ashland did have access to, from the land that we're buying down to the water. I mean, that's, that's not a small resource, and it would be great to not have that be kind of an exclusive thing just for the school.
Sure.
Secondly, I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit better, you know, we've, there's a massive amount of open land there. And, you know, I really appreciate the town taking this initiative and trying to, trying to see what's reasonable to work out here. You know, it, you know, there's all kinds of arguments about more housing. Do we really want more growth and more housing? Part of it is the scenic beauty and the history of the land, you know, especially looking for, we spent all this money on, on the Warren Woods side of the street, and to keep it in its current state is, 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 is something that we would, most of us would desire. But that's the question. You know, I appreciate that in the near term, with the current directors of Framingham State, the intent right now is to use it for sports or Title IX, what have you. But, you know, how likely is it? I mean, Framingham State has been growing in leaps and bounds. They're, they're buying up all the land they can get anywhere near the school there, taking over buildings, commercial properties, and parking lots, and so on. So I guess the question is, you know, what, what is the exposure of the town here to future dormitories, student housing, that type of thing? To classroom buildings or other types of structures that would be very foreign to the setting that we're hoping to preserve?
Right. So let me put it this way, I mean, nobody can predict the future. But let's, let's be clear, this, this article isn't to debate a purchase and sale between the state and Northeastern. So I would argue that, you know, although we don't know what the future is, certainly Framingham State has been very open in terms of what they plan on doing. And, you know, I think as we build a closer collaboration with the town, I mean, we'll, you know, if those things come up, you know, be able to have a discussion about those. But, but absent that, if they don't buy it, right, it's going to, it's going to end up in housing. I can pretty much guarantee that. So, but I just want to be clear on town meeting, I mean, this isn't about debating about what Framingham State may do in terms of, because we don't have, you know, we don't have a dog in that fight to say whether they buy it or not. But certainly very valid questions for future discussions, I think, you know, as things move forward, once they, you know, have control of the property. But I, in talking to Dale Hamel, who's their, their Chief Financial Officer, I mean, there isn't anything in their near-term plan that, that they're, you know, planning in terms of, you know, major construction like that. You know, nobody can ever say never, but, but I think they want to be a good neighbor, and they want to be, you know, a part of our community. So at the outset, I think what President Savala said in the paper, what their, their plans are, are really what they plan on doing, because that's been the conversation from day one.
I very much appreciate that the topic I'm raising is beyond the scope of the narrowness of the article itself. But I assume that there are ongoing discussions with Senator Spilka and with the school and the university and so on. So I would hope that some of these things, you know, that I, I think it's very much the desire of the community to preserve that property as much as we can.
Right.
And, you know, I'm always very sensitive to saying that, you know, we have a good working relationship with Mr. A and Mr. B, because 50 years from now, they're not going to be in that position.
Sure.
And, you know, it would be better if it could be in some of the documentation and the codes that get--
Right.
--established at this time, so that it, it lasts in perpetuity.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, hopefully folks found this informative, and, you know, town meeting again is next Tuesday, November 17, 7:00 p.m. at the Ashland High School. And we hope everybody who's able to attend will attend to vote on all of these very important articles that we discussed tonight. So thank you for coming, thank you for watching, and we will see you next week. We've got a few minutes, I'll kind of put the maps out real quick if anybody wants to just--